The hour is 5:30. It is time for the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for this evening, March 12, 2018. I'll call us to order and I'll ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Cardle.
Thank you. Father of all, once again, we thank you for our ability to gather here in freedom to do the work of the city. We would ask that you guide us, help us make the decisions that you would have us make and that benefit all of our citizens. We thank you for those brave men and women who are protecting our freedoms overseas and here in the U.S. We wish for the renewed hope of spring as the snow falls and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Terry?
My daughter's being ambushed. She's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's what you get for showing up.
That's right. Come on.
You get a key to the city and a free frosted.
(inaudible) allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In about, in 3,000 years, that penalty will be worth something.
That's right.
And she was in the fifth grade, she was all excited about that.
See, for all those times that you gave your mama trouble, paybacks, paybacks. Commission, you have the agenda in front of you. If it meets with your approval, we'll continue on.
Yes.
We are in the section called "Hear the Public." This is the public's opportunity to speak to any item that is on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity later on to address any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. So is there anyone that wants to address anything on the agenda tonight? See, now we'll move right ahead to the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting being February 26. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes as presented for the February 26, 2018 meeting.
Second.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that the closure of the meeting be reflected to be 6:25, not 6:35. Hey, I'm proud of, I'm proud of getting out of here in an hour. I worked hard at that.
I'll make the motion with that.
Motion's made.
Ridiculous amendment.
That's right, that's right. Well, I'm trying to set the tone for tonight, see.
All right, there you go.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item two is Resolution 2018-0312-01. This is a commitment letter to Envision. Tim Kitsch, there you are. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you out on pretty night.
Thank you for, for having me. What you have is a commitment letter from HUD that, I'm the executive director with the Housing Authority, and we are looking to see more residents become self-sufficient. And that's, that's been my goal since day one and so this program helps jumpstart that. And so this is a commitment letter partnering with the city to, to see that advance. And so the Envision Center is a holistic approach to, to bring all the parameters around that would alleviate any barriers for, for a resident or a HUD-assisted individual to become self-sufficient. So it's providing those services in one location for everyone to, to partake in.
Let me make a motion, that way we can discuss if you want.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cardle.
I move for approval of Resolution 2018-0312-01.
Motion's made, they're second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Terry.
I was just gonna ask for, for, I love the idea. What are some examples of, of things that would be included in this umbrella?
Well, as you can see there, it's basically centralized hubs for support in the following four pillars. It's economic empowerment, educational advancement, health and wellness, and character, and leadership. So in Boyle County, there are a lot of services that provide, are provided in these areas, but they're scattered throughout Boyle County. And, and I'd like to see us as a housing agency partner with, with those folks that are doing it already and bring those to one central location to provide those services.
Okay, that's great.
And that central location would be where?
Well, that's, that's yet to be determined. So that would be a conversation that we would have with the city to see what, what would best suit this, this goal for, for us.
Knowing, knowing the people to my left and to my right, I know I'm comfortable in saying that, that we're in total support of, of what you're trying to do, but you're, you're asking us to support you with a rather broad brush and you're asking us to, to put that in, in writing, and I'm a little hesitant to do that because if we say we're gonna support you and then you come back and say, "We need $150,000 for the following thing," we've got a little bit of a, a little bit of a discussion to take place at that point.
Sure, yeah.
Are there any other particulars that you might wanna add into this? Because I think conceptually, we're all right with you on this.
Right, and, and if you, if you read the letter on the Envision Centers, this is, this is with our new administration. This is their, one of their major goals, especially with HUD, is to see more folks become self-sufficient. So they're really wanting to put, so to speak, their money where their mouth is. And so they're, they're looking for the support that's there with the housing agency, working with the city, but they're coming in to provide the financial piece of it. So that's at no bearing to, to the city.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, the exciting part is that these things already exist in Danville and Boyle County, and this is an attempt by the Housing Authority to make all those things available to their, their customers. And hopefully in a centralized place, but also probably at very little additional cost to the community in itself, very little additional cost, if any.
There was an initiative similar a few years ago. They may still have it, it was the 211, where you'd call 211 and they would tell you kind of which agency you needed to go to. This is, I can guess that same idea, there's one central location and you kinda direct them from there where to, where to find the help they need or the resource they need.
Right, and that really, the 211 pointed them in the right direction, but the services were still scattered throughout, you know, a particular city or, or county. This would make all those, you know, so if an individual comes in and you're able to go right down the line as far as classes or, you know, assistance or whatever goals you have set for yourself.
Physically in the same.
Physically in, in one location.
And it also fits the, these four pillars really, if you look at what.
United Way.
United Ways identified, they fit very well with the same pillars. And I didn't see it as a way to get United Way more actively involved with the clientele that's in the Housing Authority in a more positive light because the Housing Authority will be somewhat directing and providing space for its own residents.
I love it, it's great on you.
All right, I've just, I've got to be a little, put my cautious hat on here because when you use the term commitment, that, that, that's kind of a serious solidifying term. And I'm not sure if there is an obligation behind that or not. I'd, I'd like to look at staff and get some feedback here.
Mayor, I'll say this from a language standpoint only, there's no commitment of funds by the letter "support." It's generally just saying you commit these principles and you're committed to developing a plan, doesn't say funding a plan, but developing a plan or implementing a plan. It also, it says that you're gonna help realize the vision, but it doesn't say you're gonna fund it. So obviously, if there were any funding strings attached, that would have to be a separate request. I think this would be no different than saying you are fully committed to economic development in a letter "support" for some company, but it doesn't mean you're gonna give the house away in tax incentives or water incentives or property tax, whatever it may be. It just says in general, you support the idea of economic mobility, upper mobility or sustainability, and any funding request would certainly have to be brought with, with another action or request from the Housing Authority or whatever agency may be appropriate.
Ron, you wanna make a comment? I know you've had some communications.
No, I think our city attorney summarized that very well.
We'll let, we'll let him put his neck in the noose. I'm comfortable there. I think we've got a motion and a second. Any further comments?
I just wanna say, I've been, I've been sitting on the Housing Authority Board of Representatives and I've had a chance to have several conversations. I feel real good about what the proposal is all about.
No more further, no more comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Mr. Kitsch, we appreciate you and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, Commission, you have in front of you my recommendations of the appointment to beautification and that being Jeffrey Baird, who is replacing Wendy Rochester. Do I hear a motion?
This is the P and Z's.
That's correct.
I move to accept that nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. There's a second, Ms. Atkins.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Ain't none, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item five is Resolution 2018-03-12-0.
You skipped four.
Four.
Code enforcement.
Oh, the birthday girl. I didn't do that on purpose, did I?
Don't skip her on her birthday.
Did you see that smooth reverse that she did?
Yeah.
Just moved, I don't eat.
Yeah, okay.
She wasn't gonna say anything either.
Birthday girl.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Where's the cake? We got cake?
I don't think so, but I don't eat cake, so.
That's a little selfish, isn't it?
Nothing about the rest of us.
That's right, the rest of us here.
Who cares?
It's your birthday, right?
Yeah, it's my birthday. I could do this hot.
Enforce our code, madam, go right ahead.
For the month of February, we had 117 inspections, complaints, et cetera. We issued 28 business licenses and recovered nine liens. We didn't have a whole lot of parking citations issued because our officer was out as well as we had bad weather, but we did issue eight of those for $190. There is a press release in your packet as well where that, they just released where we got the grants that Joanie's gonna be talking to you about in a second. Just put those in there for an FYI to let you know that we had gotten recognized for those two grants. And I added in just a list of who all our alcohol licenses are for you so you could see those. We have 44 licenses right now and we've got some more that'll be coming down the pike. We spent a lot of time in court this month, too, with several court appearances.
Federal court.
Several.
In court. Several.
Several, I thought you said federal court.
No, no, I'm sorry.
What have we done?
We're working on it, we may get there someday, you never know.
Be careful.
Don't wanna do that.
I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Really good report.
74 Duncan Hill and 88 Duncan Hill. I didn't have a chance to go by them, but just from the pitches that you all submitted, can you tell us a little bit about them, they're on the condemned properties list?
I'm not sure exactly what all the problems were, but the codes officers go in and review the property and if they did not meet the property maintenance code, then the officer determines if it's to be condemned or not. If they can bring it up to code, then it'll come off that list. Doesn't mean it's gonna be demolished or anything, it just means it doesn't meet the property maintenance code.
I understand, it just looks like, okay.
Yeah, they don't look too awfully bad from the outside, but there must be something more to that.
Okay.
I'd be glad to get more information.
No, that's, that's right, I just.
Thought there was another question.
You're getting real familiar coming to see us and we're glad about it because I think it's being productive, that, that your staff is doing a good job and we get to hear about it and so does the public, so. And once again, I know it's kinda minor, but every time I see business licenses in double digits, that must mean that we're doing something in this town instead of being stagnant, so.
Yeah, we definitely are not that. We are staying quite busy. Lots of things going on with contractors and things with new projects happening, so.
You're doing a bit good.
If that's all, I'll turn it over to Joanie. Let her get the next lady.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I was not here when we requested these grants or made application for them, so I am now picking up the backend to make the processes happen. And in February, we let a request for qualifications, we published it, and we got a response. So that one response was a good response, though, in that we have worked with that firm previously on the design guidelines for the city of Danville. So it is cultural resource analysis that gave us the one and only bid, and I'm pretty comfortable with not rebidding that because of their qualifications. They also have done several national registered district nominations, and the one that I like the best is they are familiar with African-American cultural resources because of some work that they did on the Orphans Home in Huntington, West Virginia. So that gives me some comfort to know that they, they do have some, some knowledge about that resource. So I guess it is up to you folks to say yes on the contract, and once we get that contract approved, I'll start moving forward and actually identifying the structures that are included within this contract. Apparently there are 20 of them. I have a good idea what some of them are, but I don't have the architectural building surveys quite yet. I think they're in Frankfurt in the Heritage Council somewhere. And they moved, so that's gonna be a trick to find those. But once we get that done and I can get a snowy, a non-snowy day, I'm gonna go over there and take a look at what we've got and try to get that process moving forward.
Do I hear a motion?
Well, I move to approve Resolution 2018-03-12-02.
Motion made by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Terry. Discussion?
I didn't know, for the record, it was $8,000. I don't know if we said that or not.
Yes, it is, $8,000.
But it's almost a $5,000 grant.
Yes, sir.
Right? We put in $3,200?
Yes, sir, you did.
I'd like to point that to the Commission, too. I don't know that the, there's a high likelihood of this happening at all, but on page three of the agreement under the dispute section, it does say that if there, a dispute rises from the contract, that there will be a good faith intent by both parties to resolve it within 30 days. Obviously, that's a good thing. However, if that's unsuccessful, it does say that the parties bind themselves to mediation in Lexington, Kentucky. Typically, we don't agree to mediate outside of our district, so if, if you wanted to revise that, that would be my one suggestion, that you say we revise that in Danville as opposed to Lexington. I don't know that that'd be a sticking point to the vendor. And then the other part that I typically strike from these contracts that says, but we don't have to, it's somewhat of a gamble, but typically in this country, you pay for your own legal fees. It says here that the prevailing party will be entitled to recover all reasonable costs if litigation ensues over. Now, I don't think this is the type of contract that will foresee litigation by any means, but you never know, and it's typically not something that I recommend the city do. But anyway, I'm just pointing it out to you. Again, the likelihood of that coming into play on an $8,000 contract, I would think, would be very low, but it would be atypical from what I would recommend to you, meaning mediating outside of Danville and also agreeing to pay the prevailing party's litigation costs.
Could we approve this tonight and you make, based on those changes and that way we don't slow her down?
You can approve it subject to revising that section to mediate it in Danville and remove, and remove the prevailing party cost reimbursement. So essentially, what we would be doing is we would send them a contract that would strike those provisions or revise them for, or then, for them to revise.
Are you offering that as, as an amendment?
I will, I will make that an amendment.
And I'll accept it as, yeah, that's a friendly amendment, yes.
That won't slow you down? No. Because I know you're on a deadline, right? I don't believe it will, but. I don't believe it will. This is just a, a template of a contract for them, and it's similar to the same contract we used with the design guidelines, so I don't think it'll be a problem, but.
We probably revise it in that document as well. They did, they did change the venue and jurisdiction to be Boyle County in the later section of the document, which is probably from our last time around with them, so I don't, again, I don't think these would be objectionable.
No. If the city attorney will just give me what language needs to be in there, then we'll send it back to them, but I don't anticipate it to be a problem.
I'm doing it right now, you have an amendment. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion, amendment?
I have a question for Joanie, real quick.
Yes.
So we got through all that and I know we do nice work, you guys do nice work in terms of historical things here in Danville. What's the benefit to the city in moving forward with this?
Well, the benefit to the city, obviously, that is one of the major accessways into the city of Danville. It is also one of the culturally rich areas, and it's unusual to find an African-American area that is that intact. So I would say it would possibly bring better light on those structures. It may give those folks who own them more impetus to maintain and care for them better, at least that would be my hope, by shining a light on the importance of that area. Now, is it gonna make them do it? No, but hopefully, our good intent is to show that it would be important to the city and certainly to the African-American heritage of the city. And I would hope that as we get that done, there would be more of the emphasis on some better interpretation for the area, maybe some walking tours within the city that could be added into already existing walking tours. So it's just a good thing all the way around.
And it also would hopefully open up the opportunity for some grant, grant monies to develop that area.
Yes.
And also would put some limitations on what can be, for lack of a better, what can be destroyed in that area. Now, we're just real fortunate that urban renewal didn't get to that part of the city because it would all be gone and you wouldn't have this opportunity, so.
Well, and two, to be fair, to let you know, the National Registered District in and of itself does not provide protection. You can have a house on the National Register and you can do whatever you wanna do to that house, but it would be a step into starting the inclusion of it into a larger district as it expands. And that's a very common thought, if it's on the National Register, it's protected. It is not protected.
Yeah, I thought it was.
But you have to be on the National Register to get, get that sort of protection. So it is kind of one of the steps, too, but it's not, it does not provide that, and a lot of people think that it is, so, but it's one of the steps to get there.
And does the Kentucky Historical Register do that for you?
It, it will go through the Kentucky Heritage Council, through the National Park Service. So the state will have to accept it and then it will be accepted into the National Park Service, which overlooks all the National Registered Districts in the United States. So it's not just listed through the state, it will be of national significance.
Yeah, I was thinking for some protection.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping for it, too, so, but we gotta get there, we gotta get here before we get there.
You kept trying to push that for one of our school buildings for some protection, remember, but, okay. All right.
Any further discussion?
Good work, good work.
Seeing none, I call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item six is a report from our city manager, Mr. Scott.
Thank you. In your packets is a memo that I drafted concerning our community agencies and city-county agency funding requests. And each year, of course, we have applications completed and submitted for consideration for funding by the City Commission. We go through this process every year and each year for the past number of years, we have funded quite a number of community agencies and city-county agencies, our partners with the county, that we deliver, like Parks and Recreation Services or maybe the airport. And this year's approach in looking at the completed applications, it occurred to me that perhaps we could agree in principle that those agencies that we've previously funded that basically are at $5,000 or below in the amount requested, we could simply agree in principle to continue funding them next year, assuming that we have adequate funds available to do so, and subject to that decision at a later point in time and also subject to review by staff, that they continue to meet the public purpose definition that we have funded in prior years. This is offered as a way to expedite and to focus our collective attention on those agencies and city-county agencies that may be requesting larger amounts of funds. And our day is always a very long one when we hear from each and every party, so I would offer that as a suggestion to the City Commission. We do have the day set aside on March 22, that Thursday, beginning at 9:00 in the morning, to hear from those agencies and city-county agencies that are requesting funding. If you agree with that recommendation, and again, it's a preliminary one, subject to final budget approval and your decision on that, it would cut the, the total number down from a rather large number, from 24 to a number of 10 or 11, 11 if you count the Heart of Danville and the EDP's application. So it would cut it more than half and give us an opportunity to focus really on the greater dollar requests.
Silence gives consent.
I like it. We've been trying to figure out for the last few years how to, I don't know, expedite, I guess, like you said, that, that process. It seems like a good, worth trying, anyway.
Well, from my point of view, it, it sort of accepts, if you will, for lack of a better term, that the City Commission, this one and the prior commission and prior commissions have reviewed all of those applications and reached the same conclusion, essentially year after year, that they do provide value, they do provide a, a public service that benefits our community. It's a public expenditure and so without repeating the wheel each and every time, as, as the amounts are relatively minor, that would be my recommendation. Again, with the big reservation that if something comes to light that would change your conclusion, you certainly have the right to change the appropriation or to deny appropriation entirely in the final budget process.
Right.
Okay.
Are we also saying to the agencies who do not have to make a presentation, but who meet our guidelines, that they're gonna receive what's been requested? And if that's the case, there's, there's one, there's, well, really, there's only one that's really under the $5,000 who's really requested a significant increase, if I'm reading your chart right.
Looking at that chart, and if I could just respond, Commissioner, you know, most of the requests for, like, for example, the Arch Commission, $900 to $1,000 requested. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the same amount requested.
Yeah, I'm not talking about those, those are fine, yeah.
Right.
I didn't wanna call out any names, but you've got a couple of them on there that are, one is asked to double its allocation. It will make a presentation because it's above the $5,000, but you've got another one down that's asked to double its contribution from last year to this year, and it's less than the $5,000.
There's another one towards the top who's done the same thing.
If there are any of those that the Commission would like to hear from rather than accepting that recommendation, if you think the, the increased request is too great and bears further scrutiny, I'm certainly open to including those in our schedule. I was just looking for some process that would.
Oh, yeah.
Achieve.
I enjoy the process, I just wanna make sure we call to our attention that there's a couple that will not have to come before us.
Even though they're.
Almost doubling their request.
Doubling their request.
But still, at or below $5,000.
Yes, sir, that's right, yeah, you're right. The other one is, is requesting that, but it's above the $5,000, right, but, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Bridge.
I think a good point's being made there that, that we can trust your judgment on some of those smaller ones and, and the requesting party has just increased it by single-digit percentage, but I think the point being made by Commissioner Atkins is if somebody's doubled their request, that maybe we'll want some scrutiny on that, even below $5,000. The example would be. The example would be, Bluegrass Community Action has doubled their request, and even though it's not a lot, I think that, what I'm hearing, I think, is that we want to scrutinize that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, I guess we do, but I, my thing is, is that's, when we, when we approve things like this, if we don't call it to our attention that we're doing something as major as this, even though it's a small amount, I just think we need to know what we're doing, and that's all it call, that's why I call it to our attention. I'm not necessarily going to need to come into a, a request, but I want to be sure that the five of us are aware of the fact that there's...
Right.
Three of them that almost doubled.
And, and the fact of the matter is, the, the amount available may or may not be to the level it was last year, or certainly to the level requested this year. I mean, that's a, we plug in it after we plug in the necessity, so...
Yeah.
Which was to the point of my recommendation, that your preliminary approval is still subject to final approval.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm, I'm okay with going with this. I, with your proposal, I'm okay to go with. I just want to make sure that, as we move forward, that the five of us are aware that there's three, three who are almost doubling their requests who are not going to come before us at this time. That's all.
Mr. Atkins, as you're always one to suggest, we provide that information to assist in public knowledge. Would you think it appropriate that you name those that are requesting some 100% increase?
I don't, I don't think...
Still below 5,000?
I have purposely avoided calling any names out, okay? Because I, because I like what you've proposed, and that's great, but at the same time, for the five of us, anybody sitting here, we're, we're going to, we're going to review, or we're going to look at those three or four who are somewhat asked for significant increases, whether they come before us on March 22nd or not. We've got to scrutinize their requests at some point. I like to point about not having 25 of them, just 10 of them presented to us. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
Clear as mud, right?
Well, I expect our, our newspaper doing its usual fine job of reporting will identify those three agencies. Well, that's his call, not mine.
Well, and I, I also, I, I know we have to pare this down in some way...
Yeah.
But I also don't want to open the door to, if it's under $5,000, it's automatically going to be granted.
Oh, it's not, yeah.
Because then they'll start asking just for $5,000.
Yeah. Well, we're not saying that, though. I think it's very...
Well, we are preliminarily saying that if their amount is 5,000 or less, we accept the fact that we funded you in prior years. We, we are going to, at the staff level, review the, the fact that you're continuing to expend monies in a way similar to what has been approved in the past, and that it meets a public purpose expenditure test. And that, we, in essence, are saying you will be funded if we have available funds to do so in front of budget.
But, but the key is, if, if we fund, we will fund you similar to last year, if you have a, you, if this one particular agency received 1,500 last year, they are requesting 3,000. So that's not similar funding.
No, it's amount at or under 5,000, which regardless of where you fell in that, that was, it just seemed to be a uniform administrative cutoff point. So if we want to review in depth and spend that day doing it, I'm offered that, too, but...
I don't think any of us are in favor of doing that, but I, I hear Commissioner Terry's point, and that is that if, if we, if we save 5,000, anything over and above that, all these folks, I would think, would have a tendency to just say, okay, well, next year, we'll just make it by 1,000 or 49.99, and, and, and we'll be good to go.
And then that way, they won't owe us an explanation.
Right. But I think she, we want to make sure that they understand that it's still at your review
That's right.
and discretion...
That's right.
As to whether it merits that amount or not.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think our city manager is sharp enough to pick up on...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, having heard the comments tonight, your city manager might invite one or two or three of those that have a large increase over last year to be included in those 10 or 11 to be reviewed. And then that would pick up, I think, the areas of concern you've expressed, and give you the opportunity to look more in depth, those that may have had a larger ask this kind of year.
That sounds good compromise.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you double your request, no matter what the amount is, that, that's a big jump. So, yeah, I, I would like to be able to maybe invite these, the ones that have asked for a significant amount more than they received, you know, it could be a capital project, for all we know. It could be a one-time thing that they are asking for that much more, you know, we just don't know that. And I just think we need to be very careful when we go down that road.
Well, and I'd, I'd also like to, to go back into our previous discussions where we said we'd like to begin to systematically begin to scale this back. And I think that becomes more relevant than ever with this looming pension funding issue that we know is going to come, we just don't know how big that number's going to be, but we know it's going to be, it's going to be substantial.
We should also probably acknowledge for the record that just because an agency has been funded in prior years, and they met a particular public purpose in that year, doesn't automatically mean just because the amount of the request is the same, that they still in fact meet that public purpose. So that's why the funding request doesn't, this process does not negate the need for thorough and intense staff review to confirm that a public purpose is in fact being met. Because it's entirely possible that an agency that was previously funded may propose to use funds that does not in fact meet the public purpose test, particularly for agencies who may have been on the border, so to speak, in the past. So that's just a...
It also doesn't...
...word of the wise.
preclude a, the, or bypass our scrutiny, even if we did it as proposed, because we ultimately have the say, final say-so on passing the budget and all the parts and pieces therein, so... But if, if you all, I mean, I understand what you're saying, if you want to see some of these guys come in and justify their ass, that's fine with me. Listening to 14 is still better than listening to 24.
Yeah, and I, I guess, I'm still left with the big, the big divergence of us wanting to scale things down, and every one of these numbers is higher than the year before. Somehow, we've got to begin to resolve those divergences.
Well, we can do that at any point. I mean, it's...
As long as we, and we can, as long as we can keep that, that in front of ourselves.
And, and like I said, it, it may turn out that we have, only have $145,000 to give instead of the amount you have estimated there, so...
Yeah.
There's still a lot of things up in the air at this point, as far as, as far as the funding part goes.
Go ahead.
And I think Ron was just, I think Ron's intent was that this is a preliminary, preliminary request, and we're just saying preliminarily, before the March 22nd thing, these, if they meet the scrutiny, will be okay, but they come for us for a final decision at the end. So I, my only reason for starting the conversation was I was not aware if the rest of the commissioners saw that there was some big gap, big jumps in something. That's what my intent was, to make sure we did not approve this without recognizing that was in there. But it's a good plan, a good proposal.
Clear as mud.
I have a sense of what the Commission is asking, and we...
You're a better man than I am.
Is that it?
That's it. That's all I have to report, but that meeting is on the 22nd. We'll begin at nine o'clock in the morning.
I would, I would make the statement that our counterparts at the county do not subject themselves to this abuse on an annual basis. So they just make a decision and go on.
I would comment on that, but I'm going to be nice tonight.
Eric, we ready to move on from this particular?
We are, yes, sir.
Can I ask a city manager a quick question, then? This is just coming from the public. What's the next step in the wayfinding? Some people feel like they've lost their way, if I can use that pun.
Oh, that's so bad. That's so bad.
She did not see that.
We're awaiting a report from our, from our advisor on that, and I don't know if Earl could be more specific in terms of being the more frequent contact with him, but I think we're, we're waiting for a report to come back to review. I think that's it. And I, I think it's fairly imminent. I'd say within a matter of few weeks.
Anything else, sir? We are in the section we call Hear the Public. This is, as I promised, an opportunity for the public to address anything that is not on tonight's agenda. The floor is open.
My name's JP Brantley. I've been here before. Is it on?
It's on.
Okay. I was interested to see at the, in the Advocate Messenger last week, that the Planning and Zoning Commission had a lively discussion about their tradition of opening meetings with prayer. I was not pleased with the result, however, because I believe that's, it's insisting on having an overtly Christian prayer in government meetings says to anyone in the community who is not Christian, you are not welcome here. The City Commission represents all citizens, not just the Christian ones. We should welcome all citizens, regardless of their faith or lack of faith. If you individually want to pray before meetings, and I encourage it, please do so, but not, quote, "to be seen of others," as the Bible tells us.
Anyone else?
My name is Karen Samuels, and I don't know if this is how to do it or not, but I was told to come here to see...
You're doing good so far.
Sidewalks on Baughman Avenue. I've been told that it's been addressed several times here, but I would like to know the procedure to go about trying to get it done, and what is it going to take to get it done? I've almost personally hit three people since I moved here last May.
Yeah.
And it's been very scary.
Welcome to the community, welcome to Danville. This issue has a lengthy and, and twisty history to it.
I've heard. A little bit.
I don't, Mr. Scott, would you and Mr. Dexter like to address that, or would you prefer that, or Earl, would you prefer that you take it after the meeting, or how you want to do this?
Well, the, the preferred response would be to meet and to talk about how we might proceed with getting sidewalks in Baughman, on that Baughman Avenue. It is a dangerous area. We've identified it previously as an area that needs sidewalks. We have a city ordinance, as we all will require, that, I'll remember, that requires the abutting property owner to actually pay for those sidewalks if, in fact, the city imposes that condition upon them. In more recent years, we've mapped out our existing sidewalks and those that need repair, and have tried to use other funds to not require property owners basically to pay for the cost of sidewalks in front of their property. And we've had some limited funds to do that. The problem is that it's costly to, to build sidewalks, and we filled in in areas such as East Main and Lexington Avenue and others that are high-traffic areas, but we have a limitation of funds. So we will be happy to meet with you and talk about how we might identify areas of Baughman to, to include in those plans at no cost to the property owners. But, Mr. Dexter, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but our ordinance essentially requires sidewalks to be paid for by property owners if the city doesn't allocate funds to do so.
Does, in the past, there have been issues in obtaining the necessary easements in order to have those in place, which is the other side of it? So the city can necessarily go in and do the work would require an easement to do so in order to have, because the city can't necessarily improve private property without an easement. And so there have been concerns about that in the past, that we haven't been able to receive the necessary easements in order to see a project come to fruition. That has been some time ago, I'll, I'll admit to you that, but that has been an obstacle.
Okay, what will it take? Possibly somebody going door-to-door and getting the permission with forms, or, I, I don't even know how to proceed with this.
I think staff can talk to you about that in more detail. I mean, that certainly couldn't hurt if you had a petition of residents, as long as they were all abutting, and if you could help facilitate an actual project that all the property was abutting each other, that could possibly lead to a, a project.
Do, do you have time to let us finish the meeting, and perhaps you can meet with him?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Welcome to Danville. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right on into Commissioner comments. Anyone?
Sure. It's almost spring, isn't it? First fundraiser of the season will be this Saturday in Millennium Park, and it's his hippity-hoppity, so we're all excited about that. It happens to be the same night as Rotarian's International Dinner, unfortunately for some of us, so be tied up. It's a five o'clock start at Millennium, and of course, the dinner's that evening, but, and also, thanks to the Heart of Danville, music's back in the park starting this Thursday, so kind of excited about that. We'll, we'll get the spring going, I think. And one other thing I would have to say is that some of the downtown merchants have got together, and there'll be a St. Patrick's Day pub crawl, so we've got a lot of activity going on downtown on Saturday.
Mr. Atkins?
Well, I just want to recognize the fact that March is Women's History Month, and so Kevin Coll and I got together and put this little quiz together for tonight's meeting. These are all females, they all just happen to be African-American, and the, the story is that they all attended Danville High School at some time or another in their life. So here are the questions. I was the first black Danville High School homecoming queen. I was the first black elected to the Danville Board of Education. I was the first African-American cheerleader for Danville High School. I was the first African-American guidance counselor at Danville High School. And the last one is, I was the first and only African-American female to serve as principal, Danville High School. Mr. Hudson's not here tonight, but you should tell him I did something about females.
I think I know the last one.
All right, Kevin, give him, give answers to the crowd.
Well, counselor was Cecily, right?
Cecily Napier.
Cecily Napier.
Good job.
Was LaFonda Stalworth, was she the...
Nah.
Vicky Ford, was it Vicky Ford?
Nah. Ashana Hertz was the first...
Oh, okay.
Homecoming queen?
Homecoming queen. The first black female elected to the Danville, well, first black person, period, just happened to have been a female, was Francine Taylor Coker. The cheerleader, the first cheerleader was Barbara Baughman Benefee. And then you got Cecily as the guidance counselor. Of course, everybody knows that Nellie Norris was a guidance counselor, but the first and only African-American principal at Danville High School.
That was Angela Johnson.
Yeah, okay, good job.
See, I didn't even go there, and I knew that.
Yeah, it's because you sat beside me, rubbing off on you, right?
Because I know her very well.
That's right, there you go. You did her, oh, but I said you did her, yeah. The other thing I want to share is that, thanks to the city for allowing us to have a planning committee for the 50-year remembrance of Dr. King's assassination, and we have a date to share for our first event. We're having a Community ML King Junior Remembrance Program Walk and our March, depends on how fast you can move. We're saying it's a community celebration 50 years later. It's Sunday, April the 15th, 2018, and the timeframe is from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at various downtown Danville locations, still in the works to be determined, and it's going to be followed by a fellowship meal, and that location is to be determined, but we're hoping that the meal will be free to all of the walkers and the marchers and the performers as well. and the marchers and the performers as well. And then with, hopefully, we're going to have a book, one of Dr. King's books, to hand out to the first 25 to 50 families who attend this community celebration. But it's Sunday, April 15, 2:00, various locations in downtown.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, your favorite location is on the list. That is the courthouse. I'm trying to say the jailhouse, but I thought I'd better say courthouse.
Tomorrow, at the Kentucky School for the Deaf Campus, at 10:30, they're having a groundbreaking for a new middle school. I know, best kept secret in town.
I thought it was elementary school.
It may be. It's a new school.
KSD?
I think it's elementary.
Yeah, KSD. And it's to the east of the Natathorien. So if you're welcome to, parking is at the Natathorien. That's all I've got.
I was gonna mention, or I was asked to mention, the fact that, I think it's called the Children's Place, that it's closing. And this particular person asked me, what could the city do? And I don't know that we can do anything except make people aware of it, and maybe hope that the private sector can step up and help in that regard.
Mr. Scott and I talked about that today, and it is a large hole in our economic fabric. We've got to have something in that space in order to keep our workforce.
Right. It's a workforce issue.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And I guess really, we have to throw this back to our Economic Development Partnership. Not that it's their responsibility to solve, but at least a place to have a broad-based conversation.
I agree.
Do you all agree with that?
Yeah, I hadn't heard that.
Yeah. So have your thinking caps on.
Is it due to a lack of participation?
No, I don't think so. My understanding is, the hospital owns it, and they are going to move their physical therapy out of McDowell Wellness into that location.
Hmm.
So...
It's a nice location for it.
So we're gonna put our thinking caps on here pretty quick.
Yeah.
Because that affects a lot of folks. Good point. Thanks for bringing it up. Anything else? Now we'll move right on to item seven, which is the payment of the bills, which you have in front of you. Do we hear a motion to accept?
I move we accept payment of the bills in the amount of $568,137.39.
Thank you to Mr. Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cottle, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eight is Resolution Number 2018-03-12-03. This is the ADF Grant Application Approval. Michelle?
Before you have the resolution for the ADF grant, which is an area development fund grant, which runs through the Department of Revenue, this grant we partner with the county on every year. And as you can see at the application in your packet, the county will be administrating this grant as they have in the past. The amount requested from the grant is $6,067.44. There is a match to the grant, which would be $10,000 from the city of Danville. We have allocated money for what we called our Parks and Rec Ad hoc Fund, and this was, has went through that, and as long as it meets the city manager's requirements, then we can use that money to do the match.
Then I might just add that it lists that it's for park tables, benches, water fountains, and signage.
At Millennium.
At Millennium Park, yes. Last year, we used it for receptacles at Whisiker Park.
Do we hear a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-03-12-03.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Atkins. Second by Commissioner Cottle. Discussion. Seeing none, the chair called a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2018-03-12-04, and this is the grant application, Donna Peak, on the KL CIS, which stands for Kentucky League of Cities, Safety and Liability Grant.
We would ask that you approve Resolution 2018-03-12-04 for us to be allowed to submit an application for the grant. It's a $3,000 grant, and it is matching. We would, it's $3,000 on our side, up to $6,000, so, for safety equipment.
Do we hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2018-03-12-04.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Second by Commissioner Cottle.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
Was there a specific on what this, what equipment it would be for?
No, it varies from year to year. I'm not sure. It just was opened last week. The grant just opened last week, and you had to get it in really quick because everybody wants to get the dollars. Last year, it was like traffic cones. It can be traffic cones for the police, or, in here, needle boxes or different things, so.
You look here at the bottom of this page, it lists it. It's all kinds of safety equipment.
Okay, right.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions?
I might ask a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
So it could go for different things, like safety cones. I've been seeing around the state that, I guess it's a state law, that pedestrians have the right of way with those signs that we could put in intersections. Would that be part of this, that we could use it for?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think this is for league-insured safety personnel matters, not public at large.
Okay, okay. Sorry, just wanted to ask.
Any further discussions? That's okay. That's what we're here for. Seeing none, the chair called a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is Resolution Number 2018-03-12-05. This is the Water Treatment Plant Change Order Number 10. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. With a lot of big things, it ends fairly quietly. You have in front of you the last change order for the project. The change order closes out all the unexpended line items allowances, and also then concludes the contract scope and scheduling adjustment of 62 days. The total reduction in the contract cost is $224,390.36 back to the city.
You gonna say that again, please?
I was gonna say that, too.
The key word right before that.
Back to the city.
Reduction.
Back to the city.
There you go.
Decrease.
Decrease.
Earl, I think it's worth elaborating how that came about.
The, well, a lot of the things in there are, for example, KU Power Distribution. We put in allowance, not knowing what that number was, and then installing that, we came in under the allowance by $13,000, the total on the entire site, which is pretty good deal. Other things, unanticipated temporary facilities, we were able to avoid a lot of those through some, Andy, essentially, we eliminated the need for excessive alternate chemical facilities, for example, during the project. He was able to manipulate the treatment process. So there were, those things like that go into the reduction or the saving of these allowances.
Could I ask Earl a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Earl, I'm gonna ask you one more time. Is it a decrease or an increase of $224,000?
This is a decrease.
Okay, you... The resolution says increase, and the copy says, all right. The last thing I read said increase, but I like the decrease. We're better, though.
It does say increase.
It says increase in both places.
Stephen Dexter is so used to writing increase in the...
This is the first change order where Earl Coffey's ever decreased anything. That's probably form language from his change orders.
Yeah, a little odd for you.
I'm sorry. I'll admit that mistake, and I'll change it right now.
We won't hold that against you, right? That's a good one, right?
I know we want to keep talking, but I'll move to accept Resolution Number 2018-03-12-05.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sears. Second by Commissioner Cottle. Discussion.
As long as he changes it to decrease.
I was gonna ask Earl an unrelated question, somewhat, anyway. First is, do you think you could get us the total cost versus the budget at some point?
No.
What, how we did against the budget?
Yeah, we could do that if you'd like.
I'd just like to see it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's well under. It's, you're...
That's why I want to see it. If it was over, I wouldn't care about seeing it.
Yeah. You're completing the match with the Corporate Drive Waterline project with contingency money left over on the project.
And what about the park? What's the status of it?
The park's under construction right now. The hardscape is under contract. We'll be advertising the play equipment this week, and hopefully, the project starts to be wrapped up by the middle of May. Of course, with weather like this, this will cost us realistically this week, you know, it just will. So that can slide to the end of May. The goal was to have it done before school was out, and that still is the target, and is still possible. The splash pad, depending on the suppliers for that, there's a limited number of suppliers. That could push May before the parks come in, which would mean you might be in a couple weeks there in June, trying to finish that up.
Are all the funding sources still in place for that?
The, the KU has delivered their pot of money. The city was funding a good piece of it with the stormwater utility. The source water protection grant with the Division of Water has been put on hold, so we may not receive those monies. Although, in speaking with the Division of Water two weeks ago, they still want to participate, but it doesn't look like it would be with cash.
What's it gonna be with, water?
Well, there's education components that they can aid with, I'm sure, but the cash contribution that they had indicated has been pulled as part of the sacrifices in the budget in Frankfurt.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that sounded good enough.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
You already did.
You already got it.
We did, first and second. That's right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the chair called a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
One more thing on the Michael Smith Park.
Yes.
At the end of Second Street, we would suggest having a ribbon cutting, if that's what you want to do, or a sign presentation to the community the first or second week of April. So, based on the new sign availability.
Sounds good.
So we'll work that out with the city manager and do a press release.
I would push it more towards the second week, because first week's spring break.
Yep, we thought that, too. That would also give you a chance to announce it again at that meeting.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any need for executive session?
No, sir.
Good. Two in a row, I know. Scared you. Is there anything else to come before us?
A move that we adjourned.
Motion is made. Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are adjourned.